Okay folks, we're gonna open this public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, one second. Okay folks, we're gonna open a public hearing. This public hearing is a, is for the city of Platteburg. We're holding a public hearing with your public comment on proposed local law P six. A local law officially annexing a certain property, a certain parcel of property located at Reeves Lane in the town of Platteburg and identified on the 2021 tax map number two hundred and twenty dot dash four dash three two and two hundred and twenty dot dash four dash three dot two. I'll now entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Counselor Gibbs, second by Counselor Canales. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Period. This public hearing is now open. And if there's anybody in the audience who wishes to make a public comment regarding the annexation of this parcel, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to close this public hearing. Motion by Counselor Gibbs, second by Counselor Canales. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Now entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Another public hearing for the city of Platteburg. We are holding another public hearing to hear public comment on proposed local law P seven. A local law officially annexing a certain parcel of property located on Sharon Avenue in the town of Platteburg and identified on the 2021 tax map as number two hundred and thirty-three dot seven dash one dash one four. I'll now entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Counselor Gibbs, second by Counselor Canales. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now open. I would like to invite anybody in the audience to comment on this annexation of the property of Sharon Avenue. And if you'd like this, please comment, please state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, I will now entertain a motion to close the executive session for the public hearing. Counselor Canales, second by Counselor Gibbs. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. This public hearing is now closed. At this time, I'd like to call a order the October twenty-first, twenty twenty-one regular meeting of the county council in the city of Platteburg. Ms. Carlin, we please conduct a roll call.
Mayor Rosenfeld?
Here.
Counselor Canales?
Here.
Counselor Kelly? Counselor Gibbs?
Here.
Counselor Towne?
Here.
Counselor Bob?
Here.
Counselor Moore?
Here. Counselor Kelly has been excused. All counselors have received a copy of the minutes of the October seventh, twenty twenty-one regular meeting. If there are no additions, deletions, or corrections, I'll now entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented. Counselor Bob, second by Counselor Gibbs. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Period. I'll now recognize those of you in the audience who wish to share your thoughts or concerns with the council on any topic. Please come to the podium to be acknowledged. When called upon, we ask that you please state your legal name and address for the record. And in accordance with the organizational rules of order, all speakers will be given five minutes to address the council. Please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Margaret Lynn Stonewall. I'm here to talk about the concerns of Underwood Trailer Park. And I'm gonna let you know, the flood happened in the year of January twenty eighteen. We lost our homes, some of us lost our animals. We have been waiting to get back in. We did not get back into our new trailers until the year of twenty nineteen. For one year, everyone was displaced. They promised us brand-new mobile homes, free of charge. We're very grateful for those beautiful new homes we got. Our surroundings are horrible. They cut corners, they put new homes on old fixtures, they raised the rent, and they won't snowplow our driveways or access roads. I do not have a vehicle, I cannot come and go unless they snowplow. And that's gonna be my goal. My neighbors have poor plumbing and poor sewer. My neighbors have poor electricity. This is going on for over two years now. Seven million dollars was offered to that trailer park from Governor Cuomo back then. We don't know where the money went, and we know that we got issues. I'm grateful, I don't have plumbing problems. I'm grateful, I don't have electrical problems. However, my neighbors have issues. And if we're gonna pay more rent, we want better care. I had logs in my yard for two years before I could get back in. He kept my original yard for his own personal use. Now I know why the logs never left my original yard, cuz he wanted it for themselves. I'm here to talk about snowplowing, and I'm here to talk about whatever my neighbors need for plumbing and electrical. Just because I'm on disability doesn't mean I'm an imbecile. Doesn't mean that I don't know things. We had to contact legal aid for two years to get the littlest bit of help. And I don't know what else to say cuz I don't wanna be in trouble. But I do know there's issues, and they're not addressed. And people are having non-payment of rent now. I don't know what's gonna happen to them. I've been paying my rent. When I'm upset, I hold back my rent, and I put in a letter, what's bothering me, and then I finish paying my rent. But I want snowplowing this year, and if not, I'm gonna find somebody that's gonna get it done.
Thanks, Mom. Would anybody else like to come to the podium to acknowledge counsel on any topic?
I'm also from Underwood Trailer Park, my name is Joanne Eagle.
Hey, hey, Joanne.
Okay, I'm Joanne Eagle, I live in Underwood Trailer Park, too. I'm at twenty-one Kasfreeni. My mom's at eight Sanderwood, she's in a wheelchair, she can't get in here. They just tore her whole yard up. They did, they said there was a plumbing problem in her yard. She cannot get out, she can't. Her yard is so uneven, if she even walks outside, she could fall and get hurt now, even worse than it was. They gave us seven hundred, seven million dollars, but where did it go? It doesn't look like it was even, nothing even done in that yard, that whole park, except for a little bit work on the berm, a little bit. That's about all I see I was ever done. There's no sewers were ever fixed, they said, oh, we had sewer problems before, nothing was fixed. All electrical was not working right in there properly. It's still not working proper, half of it isn't. And where, you know, I mean, they said they were gonna have us nice yards, we can't put up fences, we cannot put up any sheds, we cannot undo anything, we can't even put trees in our yard to keep us from shade, nothing. We're not allowed to have nothing in our yard, why? But it's okay for the landlord to have it. That's not right. Whoever he, you know, Bruce Eaton anyway, so he's a landlord. But why is it only him had what he wants in his yard? And everything, you know, and then we have everybody who comes and goes and keeps those doors, they have like a revolving door, everybody pulls in, pulls out, pulls in, pulls out. And then nobody else can get into their door yards. Or they have parties, they pull into everybody else's door yards. That should not be allowed. You know, if you have to, we have to have other people come in our house. We can't get anybody in our door yard if somebody else has their cars in our door yard, we don't know who they are. You know, come on. Be nice to people who's in the park, you know, have respect, at least. If you can't, then do something. This is not right for us. You know, we are treated like garbage in that park. And we should not be, you know, yes, we're all on, half of us are on SSI, yes, half of us are not, but still. The point is, you're raising our rent, let us do something with our yard, make our yard better, or whatever, you know? If you want us to do something, let it, you know, you don't do no plowing half the time in the yard. You don't, you don't plow when you're road and when you're supposed to plow. You know, you don't do anything. There's no lights in our trailer park that needs to be in there to keep us so we can see. And stuff like that is not right. There's, people drive through the park like a maniac. Almost got two kids killed over the summer here, if you weren't grabbing them in time, they would've been killed. Because they don't pay attention to the speed limits, they don't do anything, they don't do anything about it. Cats got killed because they don't listen to the speed limit. Two dogs got killed in the park because they don't care about the speed limit. Well, there has to be something to go on, you know? What happens to all these animals, you know? We're walking them. You know, you can't walk your dog, you're nothing, because everything, or people are jumping out at you, or animals are coming out of the yards and attacking you. That's not right. You know, something has to be done. You know, and I just don't know. To me, I think we should have an audit to see where all that money went. Because nothing's been fixed in that place. Nothing. It is getting worse and worse and worse, as I see it. Nothing's being fixed.
Anybody else who'd like to be recognized in the audience, who should share their thoughts or concerns with the council on any topic?
Yes, Sharon Probst, also of Underwood Avenue. I was here two weeks ago, and that two weeks, I don't know if he got talked to, Bruce Eaton or not, but the only thing that he's done is mowed four empty lots, and that's it. I'm facing, across the street from me, big piles of gravel, which he probably should be filling in deep, deep holes that when I walk the dog, I fall. It's pure darkness on my end. I've just been asking and asking and asking for help. I wanted to put up a fence, but he said the city and the engineers said no fencing allowed down at Underwood. I said, well, since when do the engineers and the city tell you how to run your park? So he said no fencing, I can't have that. And no, he does nothing, everything goes on his end. Everything, there was a shed that was left there from a flood, and it took him three weeks to get that shed off that lot so he could roll it on down, put it behind his other, his lot. He's got like three lots, you name it, he's got it. Unregistered boats, unregistered vehicles, unregistered trucks. There's still slew of garbage sitting behind trucks and stuff like that. And I'm just, you know, after living there thirty-six years, this is the worst of the worst. And believe me, if I could afford to get out of there, I'm sorry that I went back there after the flood, but Bruce told me with his own words, I'm taking over the park, this is gonna be the best-looking park you've ever seen. And a lot of people were supposed to be here tonight, but somehow or another, they chicken out. Why? They're scared. You know, it's like Bruce is the almighty man. Well, I'm not afraid of Bruce Eaton, and I'm gonna go as far as I can go to get something done down there. And I appreciate as much help as I could get. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak to the council on any topic, please?
Good afternoon, Nancy Olson from Platteburg. I'm just referring to a comment Mr. Mayor made about, and I think the word was horrible downtown. Wasn't messy, but it said horrible, is that right in the paper? Is that a quote?
I don't know.
Sir?
Okay. Article or?
Oh, all right, well, he talked about downtown. So I don't think it looks that bad, but I tell you what does look messy is the new Arnie Pavone parking lot, which has nice shrubbery in it, just little bushes, and, but it's all full of weeds. And I did notice, one day, the weed whackers came and whacked some of the weeds close to Margaret Street and just left them all there. So whoever's in charge of it, it's the municipal department or whatever, I think you need to have somebody that's like a gardener that can bend over and pull up weeds so things do look nice. Weed whacking is not the answer. If you're gonna plant bushes and trees and flowers, you need to get down and maybe two people, cuz it's a little bit more fun if you have two people to pull the weeds up by hand. Cuz the same thing's gonna happen in the Betty Little Park. Got lots of nice little bushes and trees, but you can't keep it neat and tidy, weed whacking. That's my comment.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to share their thoughts or concerns on any topic?
Hi, Steve Creek from Eight Mason Drive. And first, I'll say thank you for what's been done downtown, I think it looks great. And I, Nancy, I appreciate what you said. I can only say that I, I didn't know what it said, but I'm sure you're right. But I just don't want anybody to come and look at my garden. I'm sure it looks a lot worse, but I understand what you're saying. I have just an observation and maybe a request. Five o'clock is like the earliest, I think, I've ever seen one of these meetings begin. And I don't know if that's what people have asked for, I'm not sure, but I think for me, I would rather see it six, six-thirty, I think it'd be easier for people to get here. So I just wonder if that could be entertained.
Anyone else who'd like to comment on any topic, please?
Good afternoon.
Hello.
Kathleen Casper's at from Platteburg. Good, are you? I was just kinda concerned about, what I was told was in Press Republican about a week ago, about how Christopher Columbus Day was now gonna be called Indigenous Day. And I was just wondering how that decision is made for the city. Is that something that was, you know, there was a poll taken, or it was just decided by the council or whatever? Or is that a something that it comes down from the government?
It was a council decision proclamation by the mayor.
So with no input from the city?
There was a number of conversations, but, you know, this is the, it's hard to comment back and forth like this, just because we typically don't. But when that comes through, it was a proclamation by the mayor.
I see that as very one-sided. You've got a lot of people who are conservatives in this area and who appreciate history for what it was. And if we're going in that direction, I'm very concerned for our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nancy, or Kathleen, sir. Anyone else who'd like to comment on any topic?
Denise Nephew, Ward Two. I'm just here supporting the Underwood Avenue Trailer Park people. I got involved over the cats three years ago. We TNR'd twenty-some cats from there, so I keep an eye on it, trying to keep the cats spayed and neutered. There's an injury, that's how I got involved. I feel we are losing the battle with these landlords, these absentee landlords. And I don't know how you're gonna fix it. I'm concerned. There's too many live outside the city. California. I'm also in town, involved with in-town mobile home park cats, TNR-ing there, helping the injured cats there. That's another one. California, the owner is. Yes, there are supposedly managers there. As you hear, the current manager in Underwood Avenue just isn't doing his job. These people need advocates. I am getting dragged into in-town problems cuz those people are elderly, senior, just trying to make them understand when they're given new leases, new paperwork. I don't know how you're gonna fix this as absentee landlord. It's a real problem. Something's gonna happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to comment on any topics? Well, now we'll go on to committee reports. Each standing committee is chaired by a councilor, and I'll now call upon that councilor. Each committee starts with a city operation, Counselor Canales.
Nothing to report this time.
Thank you. Fighting against community development, we had a meeting on ten fourteen. I am seven point two five nine through seven point two six two, we're on the agenda for these council considerations. City infrastructure, Counselor Moore.
Nothing new to report at this time.
Public safety, Counselor Gibbs.
So we, we had our meeting on Monday, and we discussed a number of things. We discussed staffing, overtime, both in the PD and the fire department. We had a nice discussion with the building inspector, in particular about mobile home parks. Actually, I have a, I have a question for Joe. And for you, too, Mayor. One of the things that we talked about is where the, where the line is between what we can do and what we can't do. And I was wondering if we could have, if I could have a meeting with Joe, either with you present or not, whatever you prefer, where I could talk about some of the zoning codes with the building inspector in regards to this, to set something that I could follow.
Is this a zoning issue or is this a policy issue?
I don't know, I'm not really sure what it would be.
We, you know, we did a joint memo.
Yeah, I saw that.
Counsel Schneider sent out a joint memo, who happens also to be a legal representative.
Right. Oh, okay.
With, which explicitly outlines what our jurisdiction is and what the county's jurisdiction is. And, you know, like I said before, I think it's wholly unfair to Joe and his office to blanket say that he's not doing something.
Oh, no, no, I'm not suggesting that.
I know that you're not, but I want, save it for the record. I know, I know that you're not. But to paint Joe in a picture that he's not stepping up and doing and spending time out there, responding to calls. Every single time he gets a call, he goes out to take a look at it, if there's something he kept or was afraid to address those things. And so it's not like we're sitting on our pine quarters, waiting for something to happen, or not being responsive to these concerns or requests. There are some things that we can and cannot respond to, you know that. In terms of code changes, if there are certain code changes that Joe sees, I'm sure he would recommend them. If there's certain zoning changes that Joe sees, I'm sure that he would also recommend those. There's a number of zoning changes that we are going through right now, given the comprehensive master plan, and that could be part of that conversation. So I would like to see us take a step back in terms of being an advocate, moving in some of our state partners to help with some of these things. But again, we are very limited in what we can do without a wholesale replacement or change to local laws and zoning codes specific to address this one issue, as important as it is, but really taking more of a global approach to fixing it holistically. Certainly don't mind having the dialogue, don't mind having the questions, and the recommendations from his office. But if the recommendation from his office is, this is what I can and can't do, then that's what we need to follow, and we need to kind of support that from his office. But again, it goes back to what can we do with our state partners, his office, legal aid, things like that.
Okay, so I'll follow up by email with you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So other than that, I have nothing else to report.
Pleasure, Public Library Counselor Bob.
I have a couple things. We've got according, upcoming board meeting on this coming Tuesday, but I got the report already. So the driveway project is complete, so that's pretty exciting. Next up, we've got a steel exterior, steel basement door project and an air purifier going in the elevator. And they're putting out the bid for this fall for the roof, hopefully for a start date in spring. And then some nice news, their middle school group has been behaving very, very well this year. Which they said is, you know, maybe not always the case, so middle schoolers, good job.
I will say, I spent two years, you know, spent about two, three years in the library. There was a really great group of students, and then there was a couple of them that took excuse, but we, they were, they were all right. I remember what it was like.
Yeah.
There was no report from the MLB board, corporate council, no, do we have any special reports? No reports, no need for that. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the payrolls of various city departments for the weeks ending October twenty twenty twenty-one to the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and thirty-five dollars, thirty-nine cents. Counselor Bob, second by Counselor Canales, discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Canales?
Yes.
Counselor Gibbs?
Yes.
Counselor Towne?
Yes.
Counselor Bob?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Period. I'll now entertain a motion to approve those audited by the county council for the weeks ending October twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, in the amount of three hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty, three hundred and eighty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents. Counselor Bob, second by Counselor Canales, discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Canales?
Yes.
Counselor Gibbs?
Yes.
Counselor Towne?
Yes.
Counselor Bob?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Period.
Yeah. I'm flipping the page. What?
Yeah, you missed a whole page.
I was wondering, wait a minute, I remember reading more on the.
Oh. You know what, I Yes. Counselor, you are missing a page.
Are we missing seven two five nine and seven two six oh?
Do you have that on your agenda?
I have it in a hard copy.
Yeah, so you have that. So you should, apologize, folks, just sorry for a moment. Seven two five nine, you have it in this package, for certain. If you don't have it in the, you draft the, okay, now, I mean, you have it there. Just to make sure that everybody has the resolution packet we saw this year, okay?
Okay.
Before voting on the following resolutions, I'll note that the majority of the resolutions, I guess thoroughly discussed by the appropriate committees of the department heads. We're now taking action on these items in large part due to those recommendations of the committee. Ms. Carlin, we please conduct, or sorry, we please read the titles of the resolutions to be acted upon.
Item seven point two five nine, approval of parking equipment purchase and related services from IPS Group.
Motion by Counselor Canales, second. Counselor Gibbs, discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Canales?
Yes.
Counselor Gibbs?
Yes.
Counselor Towne?
Yes.
Counselor Bob?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Item seven point two six zero, authorized budget transfer, red complex, one, general building repairs.
Motion by Counselor Canales, second by Counselor Bob, discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Canales?
Yes.
Counselor Gibbs?
Yes.
Counselor Towne?
Yes.
Counselor Bob?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Period.
Item seven point two six one, authorized budget transfer, general crime judgment and claim.
Motion by Counselor Gibbs, second by Counselor Canales. The discussion on this is unfortunately, there's a typo in the increase to general crime judgments and claims. The account number is one one nine three zero 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 dash four four three zero.
What is this again?
This was, this was a settlement?
Oh, right.
Yeah, thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Canales?
Yes.
Counselor Gibbs?
Yes.
Counselor Towne?
Yes.
Counselor Bob?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Item seven point two six two, authorized budget adjustment, general parking and whole buildings repairs.
Motion by Counselor Canales, second by Counselor Gibbs, discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Canales?
Yes.
Counselor Gibbs?
Yes.
Counselor Towne?
Yes.
Counselor Bob?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Item seven point two six three, approve additional expenses for travel.
Motion by Counselor Gibbs, second by Counselor Bob, discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Canales?
Yes.
Counselor Gibbs?
Yes.
Counselor Towne?
Yes.
Counselor Bob?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Item seven point two six four, authorized class of housing contracts, supplemental police services.
Motion, Counselor Gibbs, second by Counselor Canales, discussion.
So we, we discussed this very thoroughly the other night. Lieutenant Trombley took the old PHA contract and updated it. So, yeah. Thanks, Mark, thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Canales?
Yes.
Counselor Gibbs?
Yes.
Counselor Towne?
Yes.
Counselor Bob?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Item seven point two six five, authorized budget transfer, general crime red complex transfer.
Motion by Counselor Canales, second. Counselor Bob, discussion. Roll call.
Counselor Canales?
Yes.
Counselor Kelly? Oops, sorry. Counselor Gibbs?
Yes.
Counselor Towne?
Yes.
Counselor Bob?
Yes.
Counselor Moore?
Yes.
Period.
Item seven point two six six, authorized additional police officers under the twenty-one budget.
Motion, Counselor Canales, second by Counselor Gibbs, discussion.
So we also discussed this, and so, again, some say from our pocket, too. So we discussed this the other night, but since not everyone was there.
Again?
Yeah, could you please, and maybe Lieutenant Trombley could come to?
So this year, we had four retirements, the police department, that, so, but I'm gonna talk about it in the global scope of funding, we had employee backfills this year. This year, we had four retirements in the Platteburg City Police Department. In addition to those four backfills, we had budgeted for three additional officers for the twenty twenty-one budget. So seven officers are being funded from the twenty twenty-one budget, just alone. No additional funding, no additional funds going into that budget, or allocated for payroll. The, the ask here is explicit to adding three additional officers to the twenty twenty-one budget, outside of what has already been budgeted. Based on the math that Richard and Lieutenant Trombley has completed, it will still leave a general fund surplus in their budget by twelve thousand dollars. With the addition of those three additional officers, With the addition of those three additional officers not planned for this year. That is the ask of this resolution, is to spend those monies on those three additional officers. In addition to what had already been budgeted for the seven officers for this year. Number of reasons for that, we, we host in the city of Plattsburgh, we host the, the academy, and that's a regional. So we do it for all of the other regional, uh, public safety, uh, agencies. And so for us to add more on this year would be a benefit to the city, because those other agencies pay for that academy. That's one thing. Second to that is, with the addition of these ten, we are also anticipating another five to six retirements in twenty twenty-two. So with one step forward comes half a step back in that department, so we want to. Prepare ourselves appropriately to staff that department moving into twenty twenty-two. With the budget that is being proposed for twenty twenty-two, but supporting the funding in twenty twenty-one. That's the long and short of it. Any further discussion?
So part of what we also discussed is, you're activating mandatory overtime at this point, because you are. Right, isn't that correct? There's mandatory overtime now, because you, you don't have the appropriate number of people to staff your, your shifts and, and so forth, is that true too? And so we talked about that the other night as well. That they, they have a collective bargaining agreement, they have, you know, the way they operate. And it's not safe for our officers to be stretched out in, in that capacity, which is why I, I do support this.
Can I just have one question, these are all gonna end up being backfill jobs, right?
Not all of them, just, so there's, there's really, the way that I look at it and the way I've tried, I've been trying to explain it. Is that there's three kind of groups of people that we're talking about. Four, four of the ten are backfills, so these are people that were currently budgeted in twenty twenty-one that have retired, okay, so we're filling those four people. Three of the ten are people that were already budgeted twenty twenty-one.
Yeah, the people, positions we didn't fill.
Positions we didn't fill, and then maybe not asserted back, but yes, okay, and then the three are brand new positions that we're creating outside of the twenty twenty-one budget.
That are anticipated to leave next year.
Well, there's.
There's gonna be openings.
There's gonna be five, maybe five to six new openings next year, right, so we're adding, we're trying to add ten this year. Four backfills, three new positions funded in twenty-one, and then three additional positions that we're asking for allocation of new funding in this, in this year's budget. In this year's budget, next year, again, there's, we're anticipating five to six retirements, which we're gonna then try to look at. Funding that for next year as well, right, there is eight patrol uniformed officers right now. Thirty-seven, right? So trying to certainly play a catch-up. Right now, get ahead a little bit, but also mine, in twenty years' time, then, the council in twenty years from now. Is gonna have another ten, twelve people of retirement eligibility. And we're trying to space some of this succession out. Because it's gonna be somewhat problematic, right, so.
It's also not an emergent, like, we can't, I'll be frank, sorry, we can't replace these officers instantaneously. It does take time, a year, year and a half to get an officer solid on his feet to have these, you know, appropriate engagements with, with our community. Thank you, sir. So we're, we're anticipating these losses, if we wait till next year. We may not even hold an academy, because it's a regional ask, so if the, the tri-county area doesn't put members into the academy next year. And we are tending and trending to have a large academy, because everywhere is short. If we don't host one next year, we either have a choice to wait until the next academy, which is twenty twenty-three. Which then means they're not ready till twenty twenty-four, and there's seven scheduled to leave in twenty twenty-four. Or we shop it out and find an academy, and now we're paying travel, overtime, per diem, lodging, all of those things. It really makes sense to act today, anticipation, the really hard ask is, ask for more. No one's trying to pressure or push any one department towards, you know, completely restaffing immediately. We are asking for simply this, this, the ten officers in anticipation of losing that half step next year and addressing it.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councillor Canales?
Yes.
Councillor Gibbs?
Yes.
Councillor Towns?
Yes.
Councillor Bob?
Yes.
Councillor Moore?
Yes.
Seven point two six seven, authorized city general design settlement agreement by I C G R.
Motion by councillor Canales, second, councillor Gibbs, discussion. Roll call.
Councillor Canales?
Yes.
Councillor Gibbs?
Yes.
Councillor Towns?
Yes.
Councillor Bob?
Yes.
Councillor Moore?
Yes.
Period.
Item seven point two six eight, adoption of local law two dash six in two thousand twenty-one, a local law officially annexing. A certain parcel of property located on Reed Lane in the town of Plattsburgh identified on the two thousand twenty-one tax map, number two twenty dash four dash thirty-two. And two twenty dash, I'm sorry, point dash four dash thirty-one point two. This local law shall take effect immediately upon approval by the mayor, following the New York Secretary of State. Entire text of which has been distributed and read by the members of the common council, is hereby enacted after reading thereof, and a copy of said local law is made part of the minutes of this meeting.
Motion by councillor Gibbs, second by councillor Canales, discussion. These next two passages of the local law is the final pieces for annexing these two properties, like, this is it. There's one more piece, which is internal, which we have to do a survey. Of those properties, and there's some timing with lease falling, and maybe able to see lines of sight on property lines, but this is it, like, this is the thing that we've been fighting with down for fifteen years now. All right, so we're, we're there, all right? Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councillor Canales?
Yes.
Councillor Gibbs?
Yes.
Councillor Towns?
Yes.
Councillor Bob?
Yes.
Councillor Moore?
Yes.
Period.
Item seven point two six nine, adoption of local law two dash seven, two thousand twenty-one, a local law officially annexing a certain parcel of property located on the town of Plattsburgh. And identified on the two thousand twenty-one tax map as number two thirty-three dash, I'm sorry, point seven dash one, dash fourteen. This local law shall take effect immediately upon approval by the mayor. And following the New York Secretary of State, entire text of which has been distributed to members of the common council, is hereby enacted. Without the reading thereof, and a copy of said local law is made part of the minutes of this meeting.
Motion by councillor Canales, second by councillor Bob, discussion. Roll call.
Councillor Canales?
Yes.
Councillor Gibbs?
Yes.
Councillor Towns?
Yes.
Councillor Bob?
Yes.
Councillor Moore?
Yes.
Period. No executive session tonight, is there any new business to come into this council? Seeing none, I will now take a motion to adjourn, councillor Canales, second by councillor Gibbs, all in favor? Hold, you're now adjourned, thanks folks.